Good evening, everybody. A lot of big room tonight. We have a regular meeting tonight, June 17th, 2019. We have agendas available in the corner desk over here. We also have a more detailed council packet available advanced through the city's website. We also televise our meetings live on Charter Cable, Channel 191, as well as through the city's website and also Facebook. And if you get a chance to speak with council this evening, you'd come to the podium up here and if you'd share with us your name, we'd appreciate that for our record-keeping. And if you have any cellphones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. With housekeeping taken care of, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Milne.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Watkins.
Here.
Seven present. Mr. Mayor.
And if you join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we consider it to be routine and will be enacted as a single roll call vote unless a member of the public or council wants something considered separately. Those items include the approval of the May 20th meeting minutes, bills and communications to approve claims on the total amount of $3,336,184.71, as well as to approve bad debt write-offs for utility billing, ambulance, and other items in the amount of $222,267.45, with a portion of that specifically $93,925.65 to be turned over for collections. Also includes downtown Pasco Development Authority agreement to extend that agreement through December 31st, 2019. Item D, Resolution 3904, to approve modification, to approve city council meeting to Resolution Number 3904A. And item E, assignment Resolution Number to name change and extend the term of the ad hoc commission related to Pasco inclusion, diversity, and equity. Those are the items on the agenda. Anything to remove? More motion, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Watkins.
Yes.
Alvarado.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yep.
Seven yes.
That carries unanimously. So we move on to Section Four. We have two proclamations tonight. First item is proclamation for Juneteenth parade, and I see we might have some representatives, including Mr. Edmund Daniels this evening. If you want to come up, Mr. Daniels, and if you have brought anything else with you, if they want to come up as well. We usually do a little reading of a proclamation. If you have any thoughts, we'll give you a minute to share as well. Good to see you too, sir. And proclamations have, of course, whereas clauses, and the crux of this one talks about Juneteenth Day, which is June 19th, 2019, whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation declaring the slaves in Confederate territory free as of January 1st, 1863, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally ended slavery in the U.S., and whereas the news of the proclamation was delayed some two and a half years to June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, when Union General Gordon Granger read General Order Number Three, announcing the total abolishment of slavery, and whereas June 19th has a special meaning for African-Americans, and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years, and whereas the African-American community in Pasco has made significant contributions to the history and quality of life of Pasco and Franklin County, and whereas the annual Juneteenth celebration in the city of Pasco has been occurring over the past several decades, therefore I, Matt Watkins, Mayor Pasco, do declare June 19th as Juneteenth Day and ask all my fellow citizens to celebrate the day. And, Mr. Edmonds, you have some thoughts?
Well, I don't know that much about Juneteenth. I was born in Texas, but I was young. I'm just 39 now. But they said they freed the slaves a few years before proclamation came through, but they didn't tell them because they said they wanted to get the crops in. So there were slaves, it was free slaves, but in Texas, they wasn't free for a couple of years, you know? And that's one of the, let's say, the ugly parts of the U.S., you know? One of the things. But my brother, he remember a few things about what all, well, you can imagine, you've been, say you're 70 years old, and someone's been telling you when to get up, when to go to bed, and the whole works, and you had, well, you were just like a slave, which you were, and all of a sudden they say you're free, and you can go someplace without anyone telling you what to do, and that would be quite something, you know? And I can imagine that, how they felt and what they did, and just, boy, it's just, it was a great time for them, you know? But slavery was, like I said, that's the ugly part of U.S. history, you know? But my mother, she said her mother, when she was just a little girl, she was about three when the slaves were freed, you know? And so, you know, I get, my parents would tell me things, and my uncle would tell me things, and that's why we started Juneteenth. And I had to get the approval of this lady here to, and all you guys are married, you know, you gotta get approval of it. You're not married? I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
Well, I still listen to my mother, though, because I'm only, you're 39 and I'm only 22.
All right.
Any other thoughts as I come present this to you?
All right. Getting deep in here.
This you, and my understanding too, we're having a parade this weekend on Saturday.
Yes, yes.
Is this true?
Yes, that is true.
Do you want to tell us about the parade on Saturday? Good to see you.
Yes, thank you. Well, we have been having this parade for, but it's always been over by the park. We would start at Whittier School and go through the neighborhood, and at Whittier Park was where we would announce all the people. And last year, we went to the, well, we had the parade in downtown Pasco there, and we started on Second and Lewis, and then went up through to the roundabout, came back down Fourth Street, and...
And my understanding that that's going to be the pattern followed this year, same as the Cinco de Mayo celebration?
Yes, same.
Cecilia was here last week, and my understanding is staff helped her out to get that sorted out, so we should be going okay?
Yes, because we had almost canceled the parade, and it is, it's nice, you know, to have the parade, because lots of people, it's not something that you read about in history books, you know? They skip over slavery and all that, and so, this is something that I am really proud to receive. And like I said, I don't know if we would be doing this if it wasn't for this lady here, because she had to say yes when I brought the idea up. You know, when you're gonna spend some money, well, you don't know, you're not married. That's kind of sad.
Thank you for coming down this evening and...
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I want to thank all of you.
Okay. Good luck Saturday, too.
Thank you.
And we'll give you a little round of applause. Thank you. We do have a second proclamation tonight, and this dovetails in nicely with a contingent that are headed to Denver this weekend, and this will be, this is our second opportunity in recent years. City of Pasco is competing as a finalist in the All-America Days, oh, excuse me, All-America City Award. And back about, I think about World War II, the National Civic League had celebrated communities that addressed the most pressing needs of municipalities in a collaborative and inclusive way, and George Gallup, former chairman of the National Civic League, characterized the All-America City Award as the Nobel Prize for constructive citizenship, contributing to the award becoming the nation's oldest community recognition ever. And in 2019, the All-America City theme is creating healthy communities through inclusive civic engagement, and Pasco being selected as one of the 20 award finalists in the nation has been recognized for their inclusive engagement processes, projects, and community vision. And whereas Pasco's application presented three projects with a clear community-wide commitment to those values, and whereas Pasco, for its three projects, chose Hot Spotters, Pasco School District, Columbia Basin College Foods Student Support, and Let's Prevent Diabetes, Prevengamos las diabetes, my apologies.
Diabetes.
Diabetes, to highlight the community's civic engagement via health, and whereas a group of community members will travel to Denver, June 21st to the 23rd, to help showcase Pasco and present those projects to the, to the, to the nation, whereas Pasco's city team illustrates how prestigious a goal can be achieved when community members of different backgrounds come together for a common purpose, I, Matt Watkins, do hereby proclaim June 21st to 23rd as All-America City Award Days, and encourage all of the community members to root for our team that's headed to Denver, regardless of the outcome, and will always be Pasco proud, because we are Pasco, so amos Pasco. And to present this award, I would like to actually give this to Ms. Ruben, or, Anna Peralta, see when I think Peralta there. And Anna, good to see you. You, of course, participated in this last year, one of our, one of our core cheerleaders, and you're going again this year.
Yes.
You want to tell us about it?
I am part of TransUnion Community Health, and as you know, one of the programs that we have, which is Prevengamos la diabetes, preventing diabetes, is participating, so it is our absolute pleasure to participate, for TransUnion Community Health, to participate in this program, is something that we have been heavily involved, trying to prevent what is diabetes. And this is a grant that we got through the ACH, and it's, we have trainers, so I am here just to receive this, but I know there's a whole host of, a team members that have been working on this, so I think we have to be thankful for all the work they've done with the community, trying to engage our patients, they can receive nutrition training, they can receive coaching, and all of that is for free, so we have a really good group of enthusiastic cheerleaders of our community's health. So, thank you.
And if we were to look around the room, too, I would ask who's going to Denver to help compete, and I'd imagine there's some hands raised, and I'd see about half a dozen hands.
And I would like to also acknowledge that your fantastic, Richa Seidl is also part of TransUnion Community Health, she's part of our board, and she's also joining, joining the delegation, so we are gonna be cheering, we're gonna, we're preparing to cheer for Pasco. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and good luck to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, yes.
I would just note, too, got to participate in that last year and to see 19 other cities competing for that, and they could only take 10, but I was so proud of Pasco's participation, and it was first time, too, and there are a lot of cities that compete for this award year after year after year after year, and I'm fairly confident that Pasco's on the right trajectory is going to win it in relatively short order, and because we have a great message and we have a great people, so thank you all for participating in that. With that, we're through Section Four on the agenda, we go to Five, Visitors Other New Gen Items. Anybody would like to speak on something that's not further along on the agenda? You, sir, first, sir, and then the gentleman in the back.
You'll have to forgive me, I left my balance in my car. I rise to speak to you today because last week, I witnessed something that actually will come up in this city, it came up in another city. I went to a Walla Walla City Council meeting, and it was something to behold. Walla Walla is not known as a liberal Seattle-like bastion of eastern Washington, and yet Walla Walla decided to do something extraordinarily courageous and brave. Walla Walla listened to the activists within the LGBT community there, and Walla Walla took some time to think about it, and unanimously passed a resolution designating June LGBT Pride and History Month. Now, I do not know if we as a city are there yet to where we can comfortably do this, but as I sat and I watched this council that I knew very little about, and I had spoken to their mayor right before I observed this vote, and it, she reminded me a lot of you, actually, you know, I thought about how far we've come in the short time that we've been together, what we've accomplished from an inclusivity commission to the dialogues that people have had, even in heated disagreement. We have all come together so many times to issue reforms, to talk to the community, to push ourselves to be better. And so as I sat and I watched Walla Walla do this, and I thought about what it must be like for those council members and that community to tackle that issue and to bring something like that forward, the first thought on my mind was of gratitude that I have lived this long to see it. Never once did I think I would live to see any part of our eastern Washington do something like that. But then I've seen a lot of extraordinary things here in Pasco, many of them sitting right in front of me. We may not be there yet, but we are getting there. I bring it to your attention because I hope, as you look into that, and I know many of you now that I've said something, if you didn't already know, being the people who do their homework probably will, I hope that we as a city can get there very soon, because a proclamation like that isn't about moral condonment of something. Acknowledging another group that you may have disagreements with is not about giving them some sort of free pass or agreeing with everything that they say and do, it's about recognizing that they exist, their struggle, and their unique story, and we are good as a city, or at least we've gotten to that point, where we're starting to be able to do that. So I bring it to your attention, I ask you to consider it, and I thank you for the time you have given me to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffrey Robinson. Yes, sir?
Thanks again for letting me speak. My name is Justin Carey, I served a couple weeks ago. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Again, your clear dedication of holding the First Amendment in our city. I'm here to use that First Amendment in favor of the unborn and against Planned Parenthood. In my opinion, they are violating the Sixth, the Tenth Commandments, which our system of justice is built on. They are violating the Declaration of Independence, expressing the right to life in the Fourteenth Amendment, originally written to protect former slaves who, coincidentally, were not considered completely human as well, obviously wrong. They're also violating Article One, Section Three of the Washington State Constitution, which, like the Fourteenth Amendment, says that no person shall be deprived of life without due process of law. Planned Parenthood has a well-documented pattern of escalating behavior. In the past, Roe v. Wade created a standard allowing abortion only in the first trimester, and Planned Parenthood's slogan was "safe, rare, and legal." Presently, abortion in the first trimester is legal, I'm sorry, in the third trimester is legal in eight states. And the current CEO of Planned Parenthood said in January, "First, our core mission is providing, protecting, and expanding access to abortion and reproductive health care. Their core mission is not to keep abortion rare, but to expand it," based on the words of Virginia Governor Northam. "If a bill were passed, were to pass the legislature, there are babies born who are intended to have been aborted could be killed after they were born." He said, and I quote, "The infant would be delivered, the infant would be kept comfortable, the infant would be resuscitated if that's what the mother and the family desired, and then the discussion would ensue between the physicians and the mother." Northam received over $2 million in donations in his recent campaign from Planned Parenthood, and his comments were not condemned by that company. In 45 years, the abortion industry has gone from safe, rare, and legal to openly advocating for killing a living-born baby. Planned Parenthood openly supports these people and these potential laws, and this company exists in our city. Finally, in my opinion, Planned Parenthood is violating multiple documents governing our nation, state, and city. Planned Parenthood's special permit to operate in Pasco should be revoked. It's obvious to all of their escalating nature of their operation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Yes, sir?
Thank you for this chance. Again, I am extremely grateful for our First Amendment and...
Your name, sir?
Oh, sorry. My name is David Scott. I am extremely grateful for our First Amendment and all of our freedoms that we have, and I think that they are deteriorating greatly in our society, and we are just standing by and letting them slip away, and because it's too much of an effort to actually stand up for what's right, and we would rather just sit home and watch Netflix than actually participate in our city government, and probably 99% of the population won't even watch the broadcast of this, which is sad. I know, because I used to be one of those as well. And I am here tonight to sound, to sound a trumpet of a wake-up call to our society and try to stop the degradation of our society as it is. And what I'm referring to is, it has been known for some time, and it was expressed in the last vote, the vote that, where we, as a society, voted to uphold the restrictions on the police officers and voted that they need to have training on de-escalation, isn't because they're doing great, isn't because they're great and fine and dandy and nobody has any problems with them whatsoever, overstepping their bounds. It's because the majority of the people know that we do not accept the standards that they uphold. They do not know what de-escalation is, they only know how to subdue somebody, that's their form of de-escalation, if they can subdue somebody and attack them and/or shoot them before they can throw rocks at them, because I would throw, I would shoot any kid that was throwing a rock at me. So, because they don't know what de-escalation is, all they do is attack and escalate, and our city just puts up with it, just so that we can just go back to watching our Netflix and just ignore it, it'll go away. Well, it isn't going away, it's getting worse. And just like so many other cities in our country, it's getting to the point where now cellphone video is showing the atrocities that are happening, and we're demanding things like cop, uniform cameras, body cams, because we know that the, the police officers are more aggressive and more violent than they need to be, and this is an atrocity in our society, and it should not be. I just got done watching some body cam footage of a police officer shooting a man in the back as he was trying to get out his ID, as he commanded him to do, and he shot him in the back. That's honorable? I don't think so. That's de-escalating? I don't think so.
And I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap up. Thank you for the chance to come here today and express my opinion. I appreciate the chance to express my First Amendment rights to redress my government, and I hope that more people will realize, and I say one thing to those that are guilty, woe unto you, all of you that are guilty, ye hypocrites, for ye devour widows' houses, and for a pretense make long meetings, and I'm kind of changing a few things.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a second time to wrap up.
Okay.
You have five more seconds, please.
And for a pretense make long prayer, therefore ye shall receive greater damnation. So, if you have big, long meetings where you just pat each other on the back, same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Hearing none, we're gonna go on the next item on the agenda, and that's number six, reports from committees or officers. Anybody attend a meeting or event that they wish to share with council? And I'm not seeing any lights. Oh, there is, Mr. Alvarado, yes, sir?
Well, I was with you, but it was just great to attend a fly-on-the-wall at the Ben &amp; Franklin Transit meeting, just, it's very, very, probably one of the more formal boards and committees that I've been to, so just really great to just start learning about BFT and what they do, and so as an alternate, I just took it upon myself to start learning a little bit more about that one for, if the need arises.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado, good point, too, and then there was actually a Pasco-specific thing that actually even affected you because of where you live in the, in the city. The demonstration project that I've shared before about route out to eastern Pasco was changed from a temporary or demonstration status, folded into another route, so actually increased service out to Taravida and similar areas, so that, that's been a well-received demonstration route, so that'll be continued as well. Thanks for coming to the meeting, by the way. Any other reports? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, last weekend had been a really busy week. I won't dwell too much on most of these topics, but I'll give a quick briefing on some of these. The Pasco Public Facility District met to discuss further on the aquatics facility, and they are, that is continuing to move forward, and we're having some good conversations as to how it's, how, where, what sort of project could be presented to the council for adoption, and so that's, that's what, we'll see how that keeps on going, and I think there's still a lot more work to do to understand exactly how do we get from the preliminary plan we have to where we really need to be as a city. And council member Milne was there as well, and please, if you, if I miss anything there, please do add to it.
Oh, no, it was a great conversation. Life, thank you.
It was lively.
Thank you for both for being representatives, too, as Pasco council member liaisons.
Then I'd also like to point out that there was a number of very key retirements last week, where Mr. Strebel and Mr. Kerr will, are now off two vacations. I think they're both out of town and possibly out of the country by now, no, but they're, they're getting their much, very well-deserved retirement, so best of luck to them, and I think, I think we can all say, well, we will miss those gentlemen and their, their experience in leadership in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
That's all, thank you.
And Mr. Alvarado, again?
He covered it.
Okay. In no other reports, then we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, and that's Section Seven on the agenda, hearings and council actions, ordinances, and resolutions relating thereto. Item, first item is an item we talked about last week at the workshop meeting, and before I conduct a public hearing, I'll ask Mr. Worley if there are any updates about the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan from last week we should know about.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There are just a few minor updates. There were some comments that were made last week from council members relative to some of the schedules related to the projects that were identified, and so we took a look at that and rescheduled some of those projects based on the comments that we heard, and those are reflected in the material that you have this evening, and they're available for the public hearing tonight, and that's it.
And I would just ask if anybody's here, we're gonna, before I open a public hearing, is there gonna be anybody interested in talking about that? Not hearing that all, I would just have, would had if you have done a preview, but I guess I will ask any council members if there's any questions before I do a public hearing. Hearing none, I'm gonna open a public hearing, so if there is anybody tonight who wants to talk about the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, this would be your opportunity. This is one that we do conduct a opportunity for hearing on, and I do, am I seeing a person come up? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Zara Roach, and you don't need my address, correct? Okay, so I was gonna say this is number five, but since it came up in the TIP, bicycle lanes, I know I said at the comp plan, we still need to roll that out, and I know it's somewhere in the process of happening, but not sure where, so. It's something that was adopted by Planning Commission in 2012, a master bike plan, and rolling out some bicycle lanes in the city.
And my recollection was that we do have a bicycle plan, and in general, as new, new, new construction is done, that's considered. Is that, is that a...
That is correct.
Is it something that, and I think we talked about it a little bit last week, though, is it pertinent to changing a Six-Year Transportation Plan with, is it, it's a standalone thing that, that is there?
Yes, the Bicycle Ped Plan is there, standalone plan, and we review that and take a look at it as we put together our Six-Year TIP and also our Six-Year CIP as well. So we refer to that document during the development of those other two plans.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you. Just one question that, Mr. Worley, there's a number of items here that talk about specifically pedestrian and bicycle lanes, so in that same spirit, we have, we certainly have some portions of the plan of this to address that very topic?
Yes.
Thank you.
And those will come up, then, as those individual projects come up for consideration and adoption, we'll see some sort of element that's... we'll see some sort of element that's pedestrian and/or, or bicycle-related in each of the projects because of the other document. Is that, is it fair?
That is fair, yes.
Okay. Still public hearing open, but it will kind of keep going around like this. Mr. Alvarado?
Same topic. And so for, just to educate me a little bit on this specific process and putting this list together, I know that I do see some dollar amounts attached to this. And so does that, does that take into consideration the quality of types of pedestrian, bicycle, and roadway? How many lanes or things like that? Or is this just kind of a general kind of number that we were just putting together? How granular does this get as far as like the, what we, we're looking for here?
The, the Transportation Improvement Program takes a look at what the improvements are for the streets and the bicycle paths and sidewalks, pedestrian facilities. And so to put this plan together, we take a look at the bicycle and pedestrian plan that's already been adopted. We take a look at what's being proposed in the comprehensive plan. We take a look at, like I said earlier, the, in the CIP. And so we look at all those different areas and also just based on where the development's occurring, where the needs are, where facilities are missing. And we put together what we think is the appropriate projects that we think we can get funding and are necessary to move forward with.
I guess my question as to the more is this, would this speak specifically to the levels? Like level of street or level of...
Can you give me an example of what you mean by level?
You know, various streets have various levels of density, of how much traffic will go through, how many lanes, and how it's designed. So with these, you know, I know the, these kind of one sheets are, I'm assuming coming from somewhere, are, are, are coming to some, from somewhere else to feed into this. And so I guess I'm just curious if what we sent to Olympia would have kind of more of that, like specifics, like, you know, that width and things of that nature.
Yeah, I think where you're coming or getting to is that, you know, how much detail do we put in the development of each of these projects? And to what level do we get to? Are we looking three lanes, five lanes? And I think based on our knowledge and experience within the city and the traffic patterns and the growth that's occurring and all that kind of thing, we kind of have an idea of what the size of the projects are that are needed to accommodate that growth and to accommodate the traffic that's being generated. As you may recall, the city put in their budget for this year to do a transportation system master plan. And I think that plan will get more granular, as you described, and will provide us a lot more information that will help us in future developments of the Transportation Improvement Program and the CIP.
Mr. Zabel, you had a thought?
Yeah, I guess I was just gonna share, you know, my, my perception of this plan is, you know, this is a planning-level document. It's not scoped out, it has not been through the environmental process. So some of that is gonna come out through that process. Although I would say that, you know, a lot of these, I mean, you can look at them in eight and nine, which is urgent. Those are gonna have bike lanes on them. They already do have bike lanes of sort, but they're probably gonna be redesigned a bit. A number of them are just standalone, ped, bike lane projects. So there's a lot of those type of projects in here. And as the director Worley mentioned last week, the city council adopted the complete streets regulations just a little bit, about a year, maybe a little bit more than a year ago. And so we're, we're looking at all of those things. For instance, you know, you're gonna, a project like James, which is on here just east of Oregon, that's not gonna have a bike lane. That's full of trucks and, you know, it's kind of a dead end, and there's no place for a bike lane to be. Lewis Street Overpass has bike facilities on it. And they're planned on it and went through the environmental process with those on it. So there's, you see, you see a lot of these projects in here. Burns Road will have, excuse me, Sandifer Extension, we've talked a lot about it. We don't have, haven't designed it yet. West of Broadmoor, right now it just looks like a straight line. I can tell you it probably won't be a straight line, but it will also have bike lanes on it, because that's what we're trying to create in that area for that. So it's, this plan isn't gonna, it kind of will, but it's not gonna call them out specifically to the level you're talking about. As we get farther in the scoping of those projects and they become more and more a reality, and we look for grant money and things like that, then you're gonna, that's when you start to see that higher level of detail.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Zabel, for providing a couple of tangible and specific examples. I think that's also helpful to kind of where the continuum lies. This is still a public hearing. I'm gonna go with folks who haven't requested yet. You, Mr. Robinson, did you, did you have, did you want to testify in this public hearing?
I actually just wanted to ask a question.
Well, you'll need to come up. And we do our best, mainly we want to make sure and hear if people have opinions about things, but if we can, we answer what we will.
I really do just want to ask a question. Normally, I try to be quiet during these things and just listen, because I'm kind of a fish out of water here. But the question that I had to ask is, how does the bidding process for these, for the projects in this plan work? I mean, do we place an emphasis on local contractors and local?
Well, this, this is not at all related to bidding. This is an overall plan that thou shalt do these projects according to this timeline. But when an individual project does come up, we then have a bidding process that's a very much different and not related to this specific improvement plan.
Thank you for correcting my ignorance. It's always good to learn something.
It's, it's the way municipal stuff works sometimes. It's a little bit compartmentalized, but you've, you've been around, and you've also seen when we've done a bid for a project and, and that, there's a very specific process that's not exactly what we're talking about tonight. This is the big picture of which projects in the six-year timeframe. Other folks this evening? And I'll go around, yes, ma'am, one more time?
Yes, please. Thank you for answering that question that I had before. And the conversation brought up a couple of other things for me that I know that US City Council have heard before, so I'm not telling you something new that you don't know. But there are some, a couple of points in the city that I want to just flag again over and over, because it is a point of interest. It's something that I get approached about on Planning Commission. And it is Road 100, the overpass, having sidewalks there for the Delta students who are crossing. And I know that that's an intersection, and we don't have jurisdiction, but it is something that city council, city staff can do to flag DOT, that we need those for our students, for the safety of our community. And the other one would be on the other side of town is A Street, Oregon, coming out of Tera Vida and crossing the highway right there. Cars are, cars play chicken right there. I have had friends that I know, more than one, who have been hit at that intersection. It's extremely dangerous coming out and heading west. So at whatever point in the future, I know that these things take a lot of time to do, but it's really important to advocate for that exchange and overpass to, to change, so.
And I would note that your first point section was actually project number thirteen on the list, so there is some, and was some discussion about that. Mr. Worley would correct me if I said something incorrectly. But we don't have anything on this plan, I don't believe, in the Tera Vida area.
There have been several, and I, I actually...
And I would just ask, Mr. Worley, what, or Mr. Zabel, the cut for something, why something's in the six-year transportation plan or not?
Well, actually, I think twenty-two, project twenty-two, the blue dot, is kind of, yeah, that, that's kind of graphically just, it's a regional, it's, it's an interchange, and it could be in between Tank Farm and, and A. You know, it just, it doesn't have to be at one or the other. There might be a loop road built out in that area. I mean, it's just, we don't have it scoped enough to know where the best place is for it right now.
So, so twenty-two is more on the end of the six-year horizon?
Yeah, it's, it's more on the end of the year, and there's a lot of planning that goes with it. I actually had, we had a group of candidates in here, and I went through the interchange justification report process. That's a couple-year, million-dollar process, so I won't bore the council with that tonight. But so that, that area has been targeted for an interchange at some point. At, you know, some time ago, it's kind of in a loose Department of Transportation plan. Director Worley, city engineer have added it for this year, and...
So I stand corrected?
Yeah, it's showing at Tank Farm Road, but it can actually be anyplace in between with the right connection, connections for roads, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you. As a follow-up before, before you disappear on, were you talking about going east from Tera Vida on A Street? Or you talking about going west?
I'm saying people who are, when, when you're on the highway and you're exiting off onto A Street, it's not a problem. It's your right-of-way. So when you're heading east, as you're saying, and you are trying to go west on the highway, you kind of cross over into this little island, but you have to play chicken with the oncoming cars that are headed towards Waluwalu Burbank area.
So, so project twenty-two related to a potential overpass does some...
Right, and then the, the speed of traffic, which is coming from the Burbank area, is coming at, you know, sixty, sixty-five miles an hour, and there's that risk, too, because the, the transition lane is not very long.
Excellent, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was fully clear on, on the scope of your question. Thank you.
Mr. Alvarado?
Yeah, if I may speak to that, I, you know, I have a close friend who their mom got hit there, and then their next-door neighbor, the daughter, was hospitalized for a long time. She was helicoptered over to Seattle, almost died. That's within the same year, so it's definitely very, very important.
I believe her name is Daisy, and she had a full year's worth of physical therapy that had to be done. And besides that, cognitive issues that caused her a delay in graduation, but she did get to graduation, so.
She's still recovering, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you. If only we had resources for everything.
Yep.
Do them all the next year. Anything else, ma'am?
Nope, just needed to say that, thank you.
Anybody else this evening? Public hearing is still open, and I'll do a second call, and I'll do a third and final call. And if there is no other material from the floor, I will close the public hearing. And we do have a resolution in front of us. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number three-nine-zero-seven, adopting the 2020 to 2025 six-year transportation improvement program for the city of Pasco for the purpose of guiding the development, design, and construction of local and regional transportation improvements.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Martinez, discussion on this? Hearing, yes, Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, thank you very much, Mr. Worley, for you and your team so quickly adjusting to some of the questions that came from this council and being able to modify the plan and take that into consideration. I think that makes me feel like we're, we're being heard well. That was where you tried to voice a community concern for some of these things. So I just wanted to personally thank you for, for being able to adapt to some of those very questions I asked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor of three-nine-zero-seven signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. And as a follow-up, I'd ask, would it be possible perhaps to share with council members a fresh copy of the bicycle plans? Maybe it's, some of us have not read it in a bit of time, and if we could share that in our documents on our iPad, that one might be helpful.
We can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Worley. And I'm gonna also suggest, too, when council retreats, probably about a year, a little less than a year from now, to reconsider the goals of the city, it might be a bicycle plan. You might want to think about that as a, as a goal for, for consideration, or if it needs updates and refinements, that sort of thing. And with that, thank you also for all the folks who participated in a public hearing, which usually you do three calls, and then you close it, and you do one on the next thing. We got some input, I appreciate it. We're gonna move on to section eight on the agenda. Ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings, an item we talked about last week with, related to a code amendment for special permits. And I gotta remember, Mr. White, update from last week, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just by way of perhaps a summary of last week, a request was received to amend the Pasco Municipal Code to define auto wrecking yards as an unclassified use, which would then allow a conditional use permit process to be utilized for their location in the C-three and I-one zoning districts. The Planning Commission considered this at a workshop in April and a public hearing in May, and has voted to recommend denial of the proposed code amendment. Last week, at council discussion at the workshop setting, it appeared that council was generally in agreement with the Planning Commission recommendation, so the proposed resolution attached to the agenda report was prepared. If the resolution is approved, it would deny the proposed code amendment and leave auto wrecking yards as a permitted use in the I-two heavy industrial and I-three heavy industrial zoning districts.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna ask if there is a motion or questions of staff. Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move to approve resolution number three-nine-zero-eight, denying the proposed code amendment to add automobile wrecking yards as an unclassified use to Title 25 of the Pasco Municipal Code.
I'll second.
There's a seconded by Mr. Alvarado, discussion on this? Mr. Serrano, then Mr. Morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. White, I've got a couple of quick questions. I see that, sorry, I'm bouncing between last week's packet and this. Oh, that's what it was. Talked about non-conforming uses, that there was a request at one point, but then it was withdrawn by the applicant. Can you speak to that? Where, how far they got in the process, why it was withdrawn, or whether, whether testimony was provided on that back?
Yes, there was test, quite, actually quite a bit of testimony. A request was received to expand non-conforming uses to, or to allow the expansion of non-conforming uses subject to certain criteria. That presented a number of logistical and technical problems, at least from the Planning Commission standpoint. We discussed it at great length with the applicants, and they withdrew their request, not, or recognizing that it probably was not going to be an approved approach for this particular problem.
Okay, so it seemed to be more of a writings-on-the-wall, stop pursuing at this point?
Yes.
Another question was, discussed rezones as an option. However, this particular rezone may require a comprehensive plan amendment? Can you speak to that thought?
The requested rezone to industrial that would allow this, or an auto wrecking yard as a non, or as a permitted use would involve a comprehensive plan amendment, which is a process in itself. And then further, if that were approved, it would allow a rezone application to be applied for, for the change from C-three to industrial.
And if we were to pursue that process through the comprehensive plan amendment, would we be able to piggyback on the current status of the plan? Or would we have to wait, have a, you know, close out where we are in the process and then amend it?
You would want to piggyback with the current comprehensive plan process, but let me make sure, council, I want to be clear. Discussions with the applicant, and he may even speak to this, have indicated that it does not seem to make land use sense to designate this particular area, his client's area, as industrial.
So we're going back to the drawing board? Okay, I think that gives me enough information, thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do, were we gonna allow members of the audience to be, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was certainly gonna happen before we were to appoint a vote. I did just wanna, I believe this is new information, Mr. White. We have a, an email from a member of the public that was included in this packet that I don't believe we had last week, is that correct? We have an individual that has suggested, has strongly recommended that this would not, us not approve this. And he says, I quote, "Making this change would have unintended consequences, such as allowing heavier industrial use next to residential neighborhoods. It would be, also be in direct conflict with existing language in the, excuse me, in the code in regard to prohibited uses." So we also have, so we have, is that new, Mr. White? I don't remember seeing that last year.
Well, it was presented at the Planning Commission. I can't recall if it was in the packet last week. But, but again, this is not a quasi-judicial action, it is legislative.
I'm sorry, I have no issue with process. I was just making sure, because that looked like new information to me, I didn't recall having seen that. So, thank you, that's all, the only thing I have right now.
Any other questions or discussion by council? And as Mr. Maloney pointed out, is gonna give an opportunity for anybody in the audience. Yes, sir.
I wanted to give you each a graphic that helps bring to the, the subject that I wanted to address.
And we'll make, we'll make sure a copy of the graph you're gonna give us makes it to the clerk for the record.
Thank you. Again, I'm Dwight Hume. I'm here on behalf of my client, who is the owner of AMU and American Pick Apart. What you have being distributed in front of you is a map that I've color-coded of the three existing wrecking yard operations in Pasco. What you'll see there in the, kind of the center upper half of the page is the, my client's property, which is... my client's property, which is, uh, zoned C3. And the southerly more blank portion of that is the part that is not allowed to have the, uh, wrecking yard operation with the exception that you can have, uh, car hulks stored there. But the moment you send somebody back there in a pick apart, um, operation, you violated the code because you let that person go back there. That's the only difference. The green on the map is, uh, Pasco Auto Wrecking. It's in an I1 zone. That currently doesn't allow wrecking yards. It too then becomes legally non-conforming. And then over on the extreme left margin, you'll see a blue and that is called the U-Pullit. It's a very small segment of the wrecking yard business in Pasco. It deals exclusively in just the removal of parts by customers and in the upper, uh, range of, of, uh, vintage cars, not vintage, but newer cars. It's only six acres. Pasco Auto Wrecking is 23 and the combined portion of CMU is 33, 20 on the south and 13 on the, on the northerly portion. But you're dealing with C3 zones there, actually only two. The I2 zone that, uh, is in place is legal and is not affected with non-conformity. Staff had given you a zoning map and the planning commission a zoning map of the city and crosshatched a portion that they felt affected, uh, in terms of my proposal and showing all of the areas that are I1, all of the areas that are I2, I3, and, uh, CM. And then there was a business park zone in there as well. You should have received, uh, this last Friday, a copy of a four-page letter that I analyzed, the basic message from staff to the planning commission, which was simple. We don't need six zones to have auto wrecking yards. We already have two, the I2 and the I3. And so with a recommended denial of any further expansion in the zoning code to allow more options. The serious question that was overlooked was what's available in the I2 and the I3? We need in order to be relocated at least 20 acres, preferably more, in order to operate, uh, on the level that we're operating at this time. And it's mostly a matter of storage, uh, in order to accommodate, uh, the business. I think I said to you before that the Tri-Cities area and the, uh, public sector, police departments and so on, uh, end up giving us about 2,000 cars a year, um, that are abandoned and that sort of thing. That takes storage space. When I, when you look at this particular color graph that I gave you, right below the Pasco Auto Wrecking is a couple of irrigation circles. That's Columbia East is the owner of record and that's in a I2 zone. But along, uh, is that A Street? Uh, there's, it's I1. And below that is, um, well, the, the bottom line is that the zones that are available in that vicinity that are I2 are already committed to other uses and unlikely to be sold off in pieces for future wrecking yards. If you go north, there's some I2 zoning in the citywide zoning map that staff, uh, showed and it was a gentleman by the name of Tieg, if I'm pronouncing it right, or T-I-E-G. But noticing today as I drove in here that that's already committed to orchards and vineyards or whatever and, uh, not likely to be, uh, broken up for auto wrecking yards. That is an I2 zone. Remember, the staff is saying, "Got a lot of I2 zone and go put it there." We don't. And more importantly, your two main full-service wrecking yards, ours and the one for Pasco Auto Wrecking, are not, are now non-conforming. Non-conformity by its philosophy is something that's supposed to phase itself out. If you, for whatever reason, did not operate for a year, you would lose your non-conforming rights, which then says, okay, where do I go? And I've analyzed this. I've looked at the Franklin County Assessor's Map and who owns what and where is a 20 or larger piece. And there's just nothing available, nothing available in the I2. And the I3 is already port of Pasco. So, to presume that the I2 and the I3 will take care of auto wrecking yards is in error. We had, uh, requested this amendment so that procedurally it would become a, a conditional use permit. Now it just goes before the, uh, hearing examiner and then it goes to court. It doesn't come to council. It doesn't go to the planning commission for a decision. I would say that you have a serious, uh, oversight in the broad brush of putting and downzoning of the area. You captured the two main wrecking yards in the city and rendered them non-conforming. And that shouldn't be done. You're talking about putting 31,000 more people here by, presumably by '27. We know how that works. And it, uh, there's a lot of need and, and increased need for car parts. So I would recommend that you reverse the, uh, and go for Option 2 that is before you tonight, which is to, um, approve the requested amendment because there simply isn't any other property available. It's limited in terms of capabilities in the C3 to expand. It wouldn't have to expand or relocate. If we could have this provision, we could keep everything where it belongs. We also have the I2 zone, or excuse me, the I1 zone and Pasco Auto Wrecking could remain where it is instead of having non-conforming status. So those can remain where they are. They don't, uh, become a new land use in a new area. Just for your own information, we have, uh, intended to give the, uh, hearing examiner letters from our neighbors in support in the residential that moved into our area. We were already there. They don't have any problem with us. But I don't want to go there right now. I just want to give you some assurances that we're not a conflict that everybody would love to get rid of. So with that said, I think, um, we should try to, try to restore the zoning rights that were there, uh, trust the conditional use process with the hearing examiner as a, an effective tool to put conditions, uh, performance conditions on it so there's not the land use conflicts. In this case, two existing wrecking yards shouldn't be that hard to, to do, but, um, that's about all I have to say right now. Okay?
Any questions or comments, Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hume, uh, last week, I don't know if you recall, I asked you about your operating record. And I asked you to bring information in regards to any potential violations, any remedies you've had. Do you have that information?
I could ask our, uh, one of our, our owners to speak to it. When I, I purposely, I was aware of it and that's where I was going in the beginning to research this stuff. But then when I discovered that our two main wrecking yards are non-conforming and that there wasn't any, the message I just gave you.
Right.
It seemed to me that that was more important than the idiosyncrasies of our site and what our performance is right there, but.
No, I, I understand. I mean, from a policy matters, I agree. Uh, but from a good neighbor perspective, while you have the letters, I'd like to know, um, rather than search the EPA or Ecology's website, I'd like someone to do that for me.
Let me have her speak to that.
Hi, my name is Irma. Thank you for letting us be here.
Irma, your last name, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Your last name?
Mendoza.
Thank you.
And, um, I just talked to the neighbors and, um, they said they didn't have any problems. I talked to, um, Trooper Wells and he said he was willing to speak in behalf of us and what we have done. Our yard, we started with AMU a few years ago and we did a lot of improvements in it. And American Pick Apart, well, we had, um, like, it's not the right, um, zoning and I have a lot of, lot of troubles with my customers because they really like our service. We, um, if you could, I don't know if you could go back and see the map when, um, we got American Pick Apart. There was like lots of, um, um, lots of tires. There was, um, a mess. We have, we have proper machines to, um, drain all of the fluids of the vehicles. We have done what we could to improve that place and we have, the, the most thing is that we have troubles, our customers. They really want us to get more parts in the back portion. There are 20 acres that I can't allow nobody back there. And what we think, it's a good thing because it's, um, it's, um, it's a better, um, service to the community. They call us. We get, sometimes we get almost 20 cars from the city that they're not wanted for some reason. So that's why we want to open the back portion of our, our place.
So I guess to that question, one, how long have you been operating? And two, uh, when you purchased the property, were you aware of the conditions, the zoning requirements?
Yes, we've been there, um, for almost four years. And, um, when we were gonna buy that place, we came to the city and because we didn't know about a lot of things and so we would just want to make sure that we could operate in the back. And to be honest, it, um, we had, um, a small meeting with, um, Mark and he's from the, I can't remember his name.
That's okay.
Okay. Well, we had a small.
We don't know all the employees either.
Okay. So we had a small meeting and we told him, we just, I just want to make sure that we could, um, let people go back there. Their answer was, "We don't care what you do back there as long as it's legal and we don't have any complaints." That's what they told me. So we thought it was fine. We let people back there for around like maybe a year. And then, um, I think somebody had a complaint about us that we were letting people back there. That's when we shut the back 20 acres.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mendoza and Mr. Hume. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, no more questions for you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are we, no more testimony? Are we ready? I was ready to move on to the next phase if you're ready.
Uh, any other quick comments, sir? Okay. And I, uh, actually before we move on to the next phase, I just ask, uh, anything to discuss tonight, any other, any appla- flying information staff might want to share with council to, to help us deliberate tonight?
Uh, I'm, no, I don't think so. I am a little puzzled by the notion that people can't go to the back portion of the property. My understanding of the non-conform use is that dismantling of cars can't occur on the back portion of the property. Not that people can't go back there. If they go back there for the purpose of dismantling, then yes, that would be a violation of applicable zoning regulations.
So, so on that point, and I, just for a second, don't, if council will indulge me, just, uh, the notion of what specifically can be done and can't be done might be, if this were to be, uh, the, with the motion were to pass, there still might be some room for discussion on what can and can't be done and possibly some clarification of, of, uh, roles and, and, and what can be done. Mr. White?
Um, it, yeah, probably, although I think the, the, the overall, um, concept is, that council understands is intact. Dismantling, cutting, parting, that cannot occur on the back portion of the property. Certainly, people can go back there and view, as a matter of fact, I understand, how, how else would you know what's there unless you can go back and view it? But that's maybe a, a better question for Ms. Mendoza, that, um, people certainly can go to the back portion of the property. They cannot dismantle cars there.
Okay. Appreciate the clarifying information, Ms. Mendoza?
Um, they told me I cannot let nobody see any parts back there at all.
And my, my point on that, and I appreciate Mr. White's point, is that there may be some confusion on that specific point. And, uh, e- even if we do, uh, do the motion tonight, there may be some opportunity and I think Mr. White would volunteer to, to talk about that because he is the head of the department there. So I, it may be a small consolation if we end up adopting this, but I just wanted to, to, uh, bring that point up.
Because they did tell me you cannot le- let nobody go and see, I go, can they go see if it's the right part and then they go, they said no.
I'm pretty sure those are folks that work for Mr. White who works for Mr. Zabel. Other thoughts, Mr. Zabel?
Uh, just to note that this is a general code amendment request, not a site-specific, uh.
Exactly. And, and I, and I, going up, going off just a little bit of field, but, so we're gonna get back to the specific thing that's in front of us tonight. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other discussion by council? Mr., you had other thoughts, Mr. Maloney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I, I appreciate, um, folks that are good neighbors, but I think Mr. Zabel's point is, is exactly where my mind is at. We're talking about is changing the way that our code works for the entire city and including areas that are undeveloped off to west of Broadmoor and, um, and, and other areas. And so, um, I feel like everything that, that's been presented to us on why we should do this really is a site-specific rezone. That would be the discussion. And that seems like a thing that would go through the comprehensive plan and how the zoning's done there. And that sort of rezone process is supposed to take into account things exactly as what you're saying in terms of impact to neighbors, conditions and stuff like that. For a code amendment across the entire city to allow all C3s and I3, and I1s to now be able to go to a much heavier industrial use than was, was intended by our code, um, that to me seems like we're going too far for a single or even two properties on this edge of town. So, um, I'm, I'm not supportive, I'm supportive of this, uh, resolution rejecting this, uh, change the code.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, for sharing your thoughts. Other council thoughts on this? Uh, Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. I guess for me, while I do see the value to one particular group, um, cemeteries, crematoriums, airports, heliports, landing maneuvering space for aircraft, landfills, garbage dumps, resource recovery facilities, electrical substations, uh, transfer stations, those are all allowable. I personally don't find a pick and pull or whatever you want to call this type, auto dismantling, any more offensive than any of those if operated properly. I support the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. So what I'm gonna do, any other discussion? Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, 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 I'm still not 100%. By, by voting, by voting against this, we're supporting the applicant? Okay, that's, that, that's what I want to make sure I want to.
No, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes. If you so, if you vote for this, you're supporting Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the request. If you vote nay on it, then presumably you'd be in support of the applicant. Is that, is that a fair, fair summary, I believe? Attorney's nodding that I characterized it correctly. Other discussion? Now, I would just add myself that to, echoing Mr. Maloney's points, uh, I'm not finding a compelling reason to change the zoning, uh, or the, excuse me, or changing, uh, what the recommendation of the planning commission. I think it is sound. Uh, I would, then a specific point, uh, I think also the supposition that property is not available. Uh, there is zone property and I also believe the free market, that all property is available at the appropriate price and do see a variety of land that is, is available. Uh, so I just think that, uh, that is not a compelling reason either. Uh, I will be supporting the vote to support the Planning Commission recommendation this evening. Other discussion? Mr. Alvarado?
Uh, yes, I'll, um, I would also be in support of, um, of the motion. Uh, I think knowing though that perhaps there's a, a need for, um, more I2 and I3, I think for us, as, as we are growing our city and I need more of these, of these uses to make sure that we are, uh, as we grow, that, and as we go north, north, northbound, we, we're taking that in consideration and making sure that we are, um, you know, attracting all, all variety of businesses, so.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Any other? Hearing that, I'm gonna do a, uh, roll- Hearing that, I'm going to do a roll call vote on this one. And just again, I'm going to echo one more time, the plant, or the motion before us is to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation of denial. If you say yes, you're supporting the Planning Commission's recommendation. If you vote no, presumably you'll be supporting the applicant's position.
Serrano?
No.
Watkins?
Yes.
Alvarado?
Yes.
Barajas?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Milley?
Yes.
Five yeses, two nos. Mr. Mayor?
With that, the motion passes. Planning Commission's recommendation is adopted. I know that's not what your ideal outcome is, but I would also, I do also ask that if staff would be helpful, I think there's at least some opportunity for discussion of what still is allowable in your non-conforming use land, and let's clarify that. And then if that's not satisfactory, I'd ask staff to help these business folks if there are any other opportunities that do possibly make sense in our community. Is that something I can get some, we can get some help from, Mr. Zabel?
Yes.
And Ms. Mendoza, I hope that, at least we're going through this process, it's understandable why we've made the decision that we did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we're completed with Section 8 on the agenda. We go to number nine, no unfinished business, no 10, no new business, we go to 11 miscellaneous discussion. Thoughts, Mr. Zabel?
Well, we did lose a couple esteemed colleagues last week to retirement, but we also added some folks. And so want to chat a little bit about that. We had a fire recruit joint academy graduation last week, and it was class 19-1, had 14 candidates, three from the Pasco Fire Department. So this was a collaboration of the cities of Pasco, Richland and Kennelwick to put on the academy. Pasco graduates were firefighter Cole Devore, firefighter Josh Bertheus, and firefighter paramedic Scott Garlets. And this was our third joint academy. Council recalls, we had two last year. And Pasco Fire once again served as a host agency. It entailed about 560 hours of instruction over 14 weeks, so pretty rigorous program. At the end of the day, the recruits obtained their firefighter one, firefighter two, and hazardous materials certificates through International Fire Service Academy Congress, which is IFSA, they call that. So about 200 hours of training were at our new Pasco Training Tower, which, as council, those that have toured it or seen it on fire from a distance, know that it was a very useful tool in helping prepare our recruits for their role in fire suppression by providing some pretty realistic representation of conditions they'll meet when faced on the job with a fire, so. Second, Pasco Police received an award from the Pasco School District through the Washington Association of School Administrators. It was the Region 123 Community Leadership Award. So Superintendent Whitney had nominated the police department, recognizing their close partnership, and specifically over the last year or so, the citing efforts of the department and working with the district to enhance security at the schools through training, improved access by first responder, as well as security at all our school facilities, so. Also note that fire was a big part of that effort as well. The award was presented last week at a regional school administrators, Washington Association School Administrators meeting. And then finally, we have a police graduation coming up on the 19th, I believe in Spokane. And we have two officers graduating, Officer David Dillsworth. And interesting, my first encounter with Officer Dillsworth was, he was a fellow student at the Citizens Academy a few years ago, and now he's a police officer. And then Officer Conrad Christensen. So both will be introduced to council on the 24th of June at your meeting, so. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Any miscellaneous discussion by council? Any need for an executive session?
Not this evening.
With that, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.